Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our Thursday, October 15th, 2020 regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section of the meeting is our public comment section. This is reserved for people who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. If you do wish to address the board, please let Donna know and she can explain to you that process.
Good evening. So for visitors who want to make a public comment, if you could just indicate so in the chat box with your name and we will recognize you. And we also have a public comment section at the end of the meeting. So we have Kathy saying, can Dan use speaker phone on his phone to make it more comfortable for him? Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other public comments at this point? No?
Okay, perfect. Moving on.
Hang on one second. So just for these virtual meeting protocols, if we're not going to have public comment, we have some guests that are here with us from Eversource, but then I also see some other people I don't know or recognize sharing their cameras. We normally ask that they turn their cameras off unless they want to speak or be recognized during the meeting.
Okay, that makes sense. So those people who are... Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next section would be the good to know. And I believe, Andy, you've got a couple of representatives from Eversource?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Without further ado, I have Pat Bandez and Jim Shuckero. Pat is our person we use on a regular basis, our contact. And Jim Shuckero is our liaison during storm events. So the two of us, the two of them, have agreed to go over pretty much the protocols during a storm and speak to the last storm on some of the specifics on how the storm went, the damage that was done, and how they approached it. So without further ado, Pat?
Pat or Jim? You're on mute, Pat.
Yeah, I got it now. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Is your other person there too, Jim?
Yes, Jim Shuckero is here. And hopefully you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Andy, for that introduction. And thank you to the board for hosting us tonight under the good to know section. As Andy said, I'm your community relations, community liaison 24/7 for the town of Hebron. So in that role, I'm a point of contact for Andy and anyone else in the municipal side or community side. If they have any issues, need information, or any questions, for Eversource. However, when we go into a storm mode, we bring in what we call community liaisons, and that's people like Jim Shuckero to help us out because there's absolutely no way we can be everywhere. Because I actually manage 15 communities total in the area there. So I go into more of a coordination role, and Jim was like one-on-one for the town of Hebron. So I know you got a presentation here. This is one that we've been, we've actually been going out and talking to all the various towns. It has a lot of very specific information from an emergency preparedness perspective. I'm not sure I'm going to go into that. There are a couple of slides, though, that I did want to cover with you. Before I do that, though, I guess I'd like to start by saying that this tropical storm, IC East, I still don't know if I'm saying it right, but it was a very unique storm in unprecedented situations. I'm hearing feedback is up because of the... Is anyone else? No? All right. I'll deal with it. It was a very unusual weather pattern, and as such, it was very unpredictable, difficult to forecast, and had some very powerful winds that caused significant and widespread damage to our transmission and distribution system. Donna, can you go to the next slide, please? Of course, I'm not going to be able to see that. In terms of severity, this storm was a very significant event for our system in Connecticut, and it caused widespread damage in every one of the 149 out of the 169 communities that we serve in Connecticut. This slide here is a comparison slide, and it shows our three prior most significant storms that we had over the past decade. And that was Tropical Storm Irene in 2011. And then we had the October Nor'easter in 2011, and then we had Superstorm Sandy in 2012. The storm that compares most closely with this tropical storm was the October 2011 Nor'easter. So it's important to note the number of damage locations for IC East was 30% greater than other major storms we've experienced, but we did complete restoration faster than any past event. The mobilization was the largest that we've ever had. We brought in over 3,300 line and tree crews to restore power, and we provided food and lodging for thousands of employees and contractors in a COVID environment. So if you look at the first column there, so the peak outages, that's like at any point in time, the highest number that we had. And you could look across that. The total outages was over the course of the event. The trouble spots, that's really what tells the story here. That's like damage areas where we have damage and where we have to send crews to repair. And you can see that that was much higher than Irene and Sandy, and it's comparable to the Nor'easter. The one thing that it does not point out, though, is these are what we call outage-related trouble spots. There were another 9,000 non-outage trouble spots, and those are things like our fire, police, safety, like down wires, blocking roads, critical facilities that are pre-designated, like critical infrastructure, as well as we were asked to restore over 500 polling spots because if you remember, the storm occurred at the time of the August primary. You can see broken poles, which, broken poles that need to be replaced is one of the most time-consuming activities for us. And then you can see the number of crews, the line crews and tree crews. And it literally was an army. Over 2,500 line crews were brought in from all over the country for this event. Now, we cannot complete all of the priorities at the same time, so we work through this by balancing the priorities across the system. Next slide, please, Donna. So this is like a statewide numbers. Now, this slide is a breakdown just for Hebron, and it shows many of those same statistics. I'm somewhat taking this with a grain of salt, though, because from what I was told, this was based on our damage assessment going out, and then it shows up as a data point in our outage management system. Many times, they would get it, like there would be one ticket for a broken pole, and they would go in to fix it, only to find out that there might have been three or four other broken poles behind that, and that would not be picked up in this statistic. The bottom line is there were a lot of events, a lot of damage events or damage spots and repairs to be made. The curve at the bottom there shows the restoration curve. And unfortunately, you see that, you know, for Hebron, it did take a couple of days. Once they started restoring, it moved very quickly, and that curve goes down very quickly. The reason is, or this is what I understand, and I'm not an operations person, but my understanding, it's because of where Hebron sits. You do not have a substation in your town. You're downstream from a circuit that feeds out of Glastonbury or out of Colchester. So when you're at the end of the line, it always takes longer to get restored because it makes no sense to do that if you haven't fixed the upstream issue. And there was a lot of damage to our, you know, the substations. We had 25 transmission lines that were knocked out across the state. So when you have big facilities like that, you've got to fix those before you can get into the towns and into the smaller groups of customers. So Andy, I think that's it. I'm not going to go into all the emergency preparedness stuff that we did with you and Paul. But if anybody has any questions, we're happy to answer. And again, I have Jim here, who was in the town during the storm. So Jim, I'm going to ask you to help out with any very detailed questions that may come up.
Will do, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. I'll turn it back over to Chairman Larson.
Okay, good day. Thank you, Dan Larson, Chairman. I have a number of questions that I'm hoping that you can enlighten the audience with. You were talking about the infrastructure, and, you know, there are people that we've heard from that are like, well, how come they don't do our street first instead of us being last? You know, those people that are at the end of the circuit. So I would hope that you could address a little bit of that, how you set up the parameters on how you base your repair responses. And then the other thing that I would love you to talk about, we get a lot of people, it's like, well, how come we just can't take the tree off the wires? Or how come, you know, the Public Works Department isn't out there cutting all this stuff up? You know, wouldn't that help the power company? So if you could get into some of the safety aspects of how you go about, you know, performing some of these repairs and some of the challenges, if you will, that you are faced with as you go out into the different neighborhoods.
All right, again, I'm going to start by saying I'm not an operations person, but I'll give you my best perspective on that. As far as the, you know, answering, why do we have to be last? Again, well, somebody's got to be last. It's not always Hebron, but I think I might have answered that already, just based on where you're at. It doesn't make sense to do repairs when you're near the end of those circuits. You've got to do the upstream repairs before you can tackle those. Okay?
Thank you.
And then as far as, what was it about the trees? The trees on the line?
Well, again, people are, you know, the questions, how come the town crew just can't go in and start cutting? And how come, you know, how come there has to be a power company person there or what have you? I'm coming, just as a, I'm coming at it from an electrician. And I, you know, I work on the low voltage end of what you people are doing on the high voltage end. And I try to explain to people, again, what, you know, the hazards that we face, which are nothing compared to the hazards that your people face.
Well, the reason that the Public Works can't take it off is because electricity can kill people. It's a dangerous commodity. It's our responsibility whenever there's damage where the wires are mixed up with the trees and the poles or, you know, whatever. We need to come in and designate that as, it's called the make-safe process. And our crews have to come in and do that before Public Works and anybody else can clean up the area. Now, this is what we've been talking to Andy and the other communities about. For this particular storm, it went a little different than the way we normally do. And some of that was the challenge that is in every community, and it just takes a lot, you know, takes a lot longer. But it was also because of the pandemic environment and the priority that came down from top officials that we needed to get customers back up. So it was all of that combined. But we work with the Public Works and the towns to make an area safe, again, when there's wires mixed up and not mixed up with any of the damaged spots.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, I want to thank the Eversource people for coming. I know what it's like to have a client or to represent a big corporation after they have completely screwed up. I've done it, I did it in my career. It's difficult to explain to people. But I'd like to read two letters from citizens that kind of explains, I think, what a lot of people feel in this community. The first one, I'll just say it's from John. John, it's to me because I was running around during that time trying to communicate people. There was a lack of communication from Eversource. John, it was not a pleasant time. We were without power for five days and couldn't even contact Eversource via their 286-2000 number. We couldn't talk to anyone or leave a message. We didn't see a Connecticut Eversource truck in Hebron or anywhere else. We did see a service vehicle from New Jersey working on a fallen tree in Hope Valley. Those workers were probably responsible for getting us back on the grid. It was incredible. I talked to someone at Eversource, but she clearly couldn't explain why our power went south. She even suggested that it wasn't really so bad losing power. She said a manager would call us. No one ever did. So that's, I don't, that's the best part of that letter. That was before, that was before, that was after the storm, but talking about Eversource's performance during the storm. This is after the storm. And this person, citizen, writes to me, and she says, for your information, when the power came back on, the surge melted all four of my surge protector, which burns, there were burns on the carpet and hardwood floor, and it blew out one of my garage door openers and dehumidifiers. Never mind the refrigerator freezer food. Eversource has a claim form on their website, which I filled out and submitted. This is the response I got. My insurance has such a large deductible, it will never cover this. This is, in addition, if you make two claims within a two-year period, as I did, for the lightning hitting my well and blowing off in the hurricane, my only claims in 30 years, they discontinue your insurance. So she said, she writes to Eversource, and Eversource writes back, "Thank you for your patience in allowing Eversource to complete the investigation to your claim. Eversource records indicate that on August 4th, 2020, the electrical distribution system serving your location was damaged by a tree during a storm event. Although Eversource strives to provide reliable service, there are conditions beyond our control that affect its ability to supply uninterrupted services. Outages and other damage may occur for many reasons, including fallen branches, tree limbs on electrical wires, high winds, and motor vehicles impacting utility poles. Also, a high voltage surge is not created by the stop and start of normal power supply. While we regret this situation has inconveniences you and caused a financial loss, we're sorry that this is one of those instances for which we do not provide reimbursement. Depending on the terms of your homeowner's policy, it may be beneficial for you to contact your insurance carrier to determine if coverage is available." Thank you. So I know that Eversource did not communicate with anybody in this town, or at least most of the people I know during the storm, and that was one of the complaints for days. The whole, you know, goal or the whole point of what Connecticut citizens want from Eversource is reliable, affordable, and renewable energy. And I think you failed, not you, but your company failed on all points. I don't, I guess, I appreciate you coming here and giving us an update as to what the company says, but I don't hear any apologies, any, you know, what are you going to do about it, really? Anything that helps any of the citizens of Hebron. And I'll say this also, you know, the legislature has now taken up a bill, has passed a bill, Take Back Our Grid Act, and there will be more coming down the road, more legislation. And I hope and I believe that the citizens of Hebron will see better service over the next coming years, but it's going to be coming from the legislature and that kind of demand. I don't think, you know, I don't, my own opinion is, Eversource did not perform well in this storm, and it didn't perform well in the storms in 2011, 2012. So any comparison is not helpful. Again, I thank you. And it's not your, obviously not your responsibility or your fault. You're not in operations. You're not the CEO. You're Public Relations. You're here to communicate with us. But if you could communicate that back up the chain, I would really appreciate it. I'm not happy that people that I know in Hebron are not happy with Eversource.
I will do that. It's not anything we haven't heard already, Mr. Collins.
I'm sure.
And I'm not in public relations, by the way. I'm in community relations. There's a difference.
I, okay. I'm sorry, well, I'm sorry that I didn't know.
These are the people that are the liaisons, that when things do go bad, these are the people that communicate basically back to Andy through the town hall, who, and Andy, again, communicates back to them along with input from the Public Works, the Fire Department, you know, those entities. You know, so even though you don't see these people, they are extremely active. I don't know if you want to go through quickly how you get activated and what happens those first few hours. Again, just so that the people understand how the system, you know, works, at least at this point in time.
Would you like me to take a shot at that, how I interface with Andy and the EMD?
Sir, go for it.
Again, my name is Jim Shuckero. I'm the community liaison and have been since, I think, around 2013. Basically, I've been working with Andy all those years, or the Emergency Management Director Paul Bancroft lately. With regards to this storm, and my comments will be specific on this storm, is on the Tuesday when the storm arrived, we had basically a get-ready meeting that morning. Pat would have been part of that meeting, which is really the preparation for what we thought was going to be a serious event. As it turned out, it was, and basically the lights were out roughly 2:30 in the afternoon, as Pat's chart showed. What my responsibility really is, is to praise Andy and Paul with regards to what we see happening. And that it gets accomplished in the following means, and it's pretty much the same day-to-day. Is the first thing I do is we have our, we either text message, email, or talk by phone. Those are really the three methodologies that we use. I reach out to either Andy or Paul, give them the insights that I have, and that effectively, if I check my notes, I believe that began on Tuesday afternoon. And then basically every morning, with Pat as the leadership of the area community liaison surrounding Hebron, we basically have an update. The first thing I do is after that update, I call Andy or Paul and tell them basically what's happening, what the plans are for the day, where we see things going, what's happening not only in the town, but maybe on a larger scale. At that point, we simply communicate back and forth continually by phone, by text, by email. The same takes place on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We're communicating many times late into the evening. The first goal always of Andy and Paul is to address the critical facilities, which is for the most part, critical facilities in your town center, your stores, your fire department, your town center, the assisted living facility, the high school. And that was really goal number one. And I remember that when it finally did happen, it took a couple of days, that that was an important event. And I know Andy and Paul were thankful that at least when we did get it done, it got done. And after that point, once we get those critical facilities back, we're then really into the, into getting the largest number of customers we can back at a time. And you could see that from the chart that basically Pat had shared everything before, that there is a big drop-off in the outages, left off a little bit, and then, you know, slowly came down as we essentially centered around, you know, smaller and smaller sections of town with regards to outages. Andy would usually communicate, I worked with him actively in the storm. He would bring issues to my attention. I'd bring those to Pat's attention to make sure that they got addressed. I would do research via the tools that are available. He's very excellent to work with, very professional, and basically that's the routine we went through for days until basically, in effect, every customer came back. So that's really my role, is to be the contact with the leadership, the operations leadership at Eversource. If we get guidance from Pat, share that with Andy and Paul as quickly as possible. Let them know what's happening. Get feedback from them with regards to where their areas' concerns are, and to share that feedback as soon as I get it with those that can make, address the remedies. So that's the big picture of how at least the community liaison works with your town leadership.
And we're doing that in every one of the 149 towns that we operate.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Peter Casper, and thank you both to Pat and to Jim for coming on. And maybe this is to Pat, your differentiation relative to operational. So this might be... And maybe this is to Pat, your differentiation, differentiation relative to operational. So this might be an operational observation or question, but. One of the things that I think is our mutual challenge in this state, and obviously you probably feel the same frustration is we. We're working with an antiquated infrastructure. We have wooden poles over, you know, lines running down the street with trees all over the place and. Is I know the towns are responsible and have been working with ever source on some tree trimming, but. Are there other things that from a proactive nature that ever source is doing in their coordination with the towns to sort of try to get ahead of. Of the next door in terms of maybe addressing some of these, these issues that come with challenges associated with a. With sort of an antiquated distribution system when I, when I think about it from the poles and lines and things like that. Is there anything you can do to comment on that? Or is that outside of your scope? I'm not sure.
No, I'm, I mean, we have had resiliency programs for the last eight years. Where we've been investing, making investments in the infrastructure. Stronger, wider, broader poles, wire, smart switches. A lot of money invested in the tree trimming, which I don't know that we'll ever get ahead about the amount of dead trees. It's just astounding. But one, one thing actually that was interesting for this storm. If you talk to the tree people, it was mostly healthy trees that came down. And they were trees that were outside of the towns right away and ever sources trim zone. And it's been attributed to the drought. So sometimes, you know, we're a heavily treed state. People love their trees. They don't want to cut them. So that's one of the things, but I do. I do acknowledge your point about the infrastructure and how there's only so much you can do. But what, as an example, we, I told you, we've been meeting with the towns and we had a meeting with Andy last week, I think it was. And one of the things we talked about is. Your, one of your main feeds that comes in from Glastonbury is on an off road right away. It goes through the woods. In a heavily treed area. And it's been raised to our, to our engineers to maybe look at, or at least have a goal, a target. To get it off of that and move it over to the road where maybe it could be managed a little bit easier than, than having it go through the woods. So there are things like that. And again, that was, you know, Andy had raised that. That point and we are looking into that.
Mr. Chair.
So if I could, if I could jump in there, Mr. Chairman. So Pat hit it on the head. So we had the post meeting and we tried to pick out the reasons Hebron got hit so hard. And why the power was out so long and try to proactively work towards trying to prevent that for next time. What reared its ugly head in this storm and the reason Hebron was hit so hard. Is not only the one from Diamond Lake region from Glastonbury, but the one coming from Willamette. To the Judd Brook Station in Colchester that feeds Hebron. Both distribution lines were damaged. And they're both not on a public right of way. They're, they're like they said, out in the woods and. Harder to maintain and harder to repair. So. In our meetings to see what we could do better, I've put a request in on the town of Hebron's behalf. To try to look into those distribution lines to see if there's anything we can do to get them on a more accessible. Right of way, whether it be state or town or some other. And then secondly, to enhance the protection of those. So we can try to avoid something like this again. So because both areas of town, the Amson area was fed through Willamette, the Judd Brook Circuit. And then the north end of town was fed through Glastonbury, Diamond Lake, both those transmission lines were down. And were not easily accessible to repair. So that cost us a couple more days of major outages throughout the whole town.
So, Mr. Chairman, just maybe a suggestion. You know, the, the, the things that people talk to me about was the fact that they did not have information early on and how difficult that was. It was, people were fearful. Some people had conditions. They didn't know what was going, what was going on. There's, there was really was a lack of communication. I had a town hall with Senator Edelman the other day and he suggested that was really innovative and that was. I won't take any credit for this, but I just thought it was a really good idea. We need real time information for where the, where the power breaks are. And, and you know, the power outage map. Is fairly crude. I mean, it's helpful at some point, but it's not, it's not. You know, it's not high tech, that's for sure. But if we could get real time information, it would help people plan. And it would give them hope, which is really important in these, these storms. People want to know that it's going to be fixed at some point. So communication is really important from ever source. And I, I have to say the early information, it wasn't there. Failure, but a real time system could be really helpful.
Well. If, if I may, Mr. Chair address that. Actually, Mr. Collins, that is one of the things we've been discussing with our towns are some new. Portals, web based applications and a like two way interactive. Where towns can go in or people can go in and kind of self serve and get the information that, that is needed. The outage map, again, it's a step in the right direction, but it definitely, especially this, these days and ages, people want. People want, people demand information. And we know that, but you know. It takes time. It costs money to do that. So, but we are working on that right now.
So the joke is that early on it's called the outrage map and then it becomes the outage map. So if you don't get, if you don't have power early, you're kind of mad. Then if other people start getting power before you start pouting. But I appreciate you coming and thank you for all the information.
And thank you very, very much. Anyone else have any other questions? I thank you very, very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
Thank you. Thank you, Pat and Jim.
You're welcome.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Have a safe, have a safe, happy weekend. Thank you. Okay, our next section will be the town manager's report.
Yes. Exciting part of the meeting. Okay, Mr. Chairman. So it's that time of year again, we're going to start working on the budgets and per charter in October. The board of finance has to meet with the board of selectmen and come up with some sort of plan to give direction. To the town and the board of ed on next year's budget. So the board of finance has their regular meeting next Thursday, the twenty second. And they've asked me as latest today to see if that's something the board of cyber could join them. At to do this exact thing that's spelled out in the charter. So I've given you heads up, there'll be more to come on that.
I myself, Dan Larson speaking, I will be available. I will make myself available for that. I don't know if you want to. Or I'll actually, I'll pull the other members while we have them on. Looking down, John, are you available?
Oh, absolutely. Available always.
Yes, sir. Available. Peter Casper.
Okay, Gail. You're on mute. You're on.
Gail is available.
Okay, and Mark?
What was the specific date?
The twenty second, next, next Thursday, seven PM.
Okay.
I guess you have your answer, Andy.
Right. Thank you very much. That's, that's, that's a big help. So going right into that, this next item goes right along with that. We finished the collections for this part of the year and we're just shy by a little bit from where we would be. Last year's collections. So we do them in two billings. I sent it to Donna. She's got it up on the screen. Thank you very much, Donna. There's the note from Adrian showing where we are. If you want to take a minute and if you can see that up on the screen that just, I just got that later today. And I wanted to give it to you guys at this meeting.
Perfect.
So in essence, we've gotten some back collections with some interest. That we didn't really anticipate, which helped out quite a bit, but we're right where we want to be at least. For now, we'll see. And I think moving forward is probably going to change a little bit, but as of right now, even with the extension, we did okay.
Thank you.
We've been working with the parks and rec department. We're going to have a forestry plan for the town open space and that'll be coming to the board of selectment. Shortly, we're meeting with that person, Mike O'Leary, the town planner, myself, the town manager, and of course, Rich Clark, who maintains the open space. With the contractor that was selected. So he'll have a final plan and we'll be bringing that to the board of selectment so you can review. So that took about a year, but that's now done. So that was another big task. We're going to continue to work on the parks and rec plan moving forward for the part time position with Mr. Clarko. And as, as the people earlier stated from ever source, we had a meeting with them. And a letter was sent out to them when they're getting permission in three specific areas of Hebron. They're going to do some more extensive tree trimming at no cost to the town of Hebron. Per one of our requests due to this last storm for heavy outages continually in those three spots. So they have agreed, they've agreed to do that and they're working on that as we speak. Pleased to announce once again, the stuff seems all storm related, but that's, we continue to work on it even though the storm has gone. I've gotten a letter of commitment from the other two towns along with Hebron that belong to Ram. And approving to move forward to try to generate that school. I have a contractor. That's going to come out and take a look and give us a quote and then we're going to submit it. To the state through Kathy Austin to see if we can't get funding through one of these sources to turn that into a regional. Shelter. And I think we'll prevail on that. We're going to continue to move forward on that. That's been looked at and talked about since, since I've been here. So hopefully. I can prevail. And that's one of my pet projects. I'm going to try to get this going as soon as we can to help out in that area. They started paving company three firehouse today. Putting binder down. Hopefully if the weather holds up some more binder tomorrow, we'll try to get that wrapped up and then I'll wrap up our paving projects once that's done, at least for this year. And then you're packing under correspondence. You can see the letter I sent. To ever source, but also. About the tree trimming. So they're using that. They're using a contractor to come in and so far the, the people have been cooperative. And then there's a second letter in there I sent to the chairman of WPCA. Asking them for some consideration for hardships and the COVID nineteen on the increase in the sewer fees. And I was told by Kevin Kelly, the WPCA administrator, that they took it under consideration and they're going to come back with some recommendations. Possibly a two part billing and some forgiveness in that area. So I'm waiting to get that. So we did make a little bit of progress on that. And that's all I had right now.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, you want to get into the COVID nineteen long term recovery, please?
Sure, I will. If I can, can Mr. Chairman, I'll turn that over to Selectment Casper.
The, the, the meeting, the next meeting for, from the state actually hasn't occurred yet, Andy, so I don't have anything. Additional specific to the long term recovery information that I provided at the last meeting.
I don't know if you wanted to touch on that email I sent you this afternoon. That kind of goes along with that. The funding for. Small businesses.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't done any additional research on it. I mean, I read it, but I haven't done any additional research on it. I mean, can you speak to that then for, for me? I mean, I looked at it, but I wasn't sure exactly what. I was supposed to do with that.
That's okay. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. So I don't have it in front of me either, but we got a notification later or late this afternoon. That there's another possible source of funding through FEMA to try to help small businesses, nonprofits and things of that nature. Due to the COVID, there's about three million dollars that can be dispersed throughout. The applications and I think you have up until December twentieth to apply. So we're going to get that information out to. The community, the businesses and our economic development list served to let people know and if they need any assistance on. Filling that kind of stuff up, we're going to try to work with them on that.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll supply that so all the selectmen have a copy of that. That just came in late today. So everybody knows what we're talking about. Kind of premature, but I, it was good news. I wanted to bring it up. And then as the schools, as you can see, we've had some cases in Ram and then also in. Hebron L as well. So they've been doing some contact contract tracing. And they weren't done doing it at Ram. So because they weren't done, they felt that it was a good idea to close the school. That's what's going on over there if people didn't know. And then Donna, do you have anything that you want to add?
Not for the COVID recovery, nothing new on our end.
Okay. That's all I had on that, Mr. Chairman, for now.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
So now we have the update on the Hebron is open for business task force. And I think Donna's prepared to speak to that along with Peter Casper.
I'll do a better job on this one. Donna, did you have something or do you want me to go?
Why don't you go ahead, Peter, and then I can add anything if you need.
Okay, thank you. All right, Peter Casper. So we, just a couple of things that I thought you'd be interested in. We've taken the next step. On the task force to involve the, the folks, a student, a representative of the student body. At Ram and specifically from the DECA club. And so we've had some, a couple of initial meetings and some great ideas that have come from that. So we. We really look forward to taking the next steps on that. And so they've got some great ideas that as they develop, I'll, I'll bring back to the board to share, but. Bringing some, some new life and excitement into the thinking about how we can capture. Some expand our community outreach really by tapping into the younger folks. And how we can utilize some of, some of the other technology and social media platforms to tie our businesses into the community. More effectively and also use their ideas to see if we can get some more traction from the existing programs that we've launched. So. Shops local goes to the end of the year and that's going okay. We could, we could get better participation on that. So we're going to. Use the Ram kids to think differently about how we can maybe. Get some more traction there as well as a couple of other programs that I've mentioned in the past. We did talk about last meeting. Can the town look at some facilities and how do we help our restaurants? So another, another program there. So working with Andy. We're going to take a crack at the, sort of the initial assessment of a, of a taste of Hebron, you know, how can we. You know, we're going to contact, how can we utilize some of our facilities? Maybe, you know, we're contacting the Lions and we're going to, it's a very initial discussions. And if we have some traction there. Some concepts that we're working on, then we'll, we're going to tap into the local business, restaurant owners to see if there is mutual interest, but we have started the exploration. Of, of a concept to see what we can do to support our restaurants and take a, take an initiative built around supporting those folks. So that's, that's new. We also are coordinating, this is Donna facilitating the coordination of the town, our group with the town of Center project. So maybe Donna, you can talk about the snow folk as, as something I know that you, that you're part of. So maybe you could just share that and the town center project. How we can work together, at least conceptually.
Sure. When we were brainstorming at our task force meeting the other night, we were talking about the taste of Hebron and maybe having a few. Events where we would do a, you know, multi course meal from different restaurants and have the DECA kids. Help us to distribute those pre purchased meals. And we were hoping to do one of the first one around the holidays. So end of November, early December. And we were hoping to do one of the first one around the holidays, so end of November, early December. And we contacted the Town Center Project to see if they would be interested in maybe coordinating the rollout of the snow folk event, just to try to bring something festive to the community that could be, you know, safely done with social distancing. And the snow folk are going to be installed end of November, early December, all the way down Main Street. There's going to be, I believe there's eight artists decorated, the snow folk. We're going to work with them to see if we could come up with a holiday event. And then the other thing that's new with the task force is we're working with Andover. Andover had contacted us, and they're very interested in following our project. And they presented it to their Board of Selectmen earlier this week. So the Selectmen and the EDC in Andover are considering. So we may look to do some joint activities. We've shared a lot of our information with them.
And the other thing, too, as I think about this, is that I recognize that the task force, task force by definition has a shelf life. And so I sort of, we sort of view this as phase two with the involvement of Ram, with the involvement of potential other communities, and then thinking about our targeted completion of the Shops Local program at the end of the year. The idea would be to, as some of these new initiatives come to bear and come back to the board, and again, we're thinking about this as having a shelf life, then assess it as the year gets closer, as the year end gets closer, get your perspective on if we should continue to take an active role in the initiative, or, you know, maybe the task force has served its purpose. So I just want to make sure the board recognizes that I do understand that there is a shelf life to this. But again, try to view this in multiple stages with a year-end target for reassessment. So that's it. That's my update, unless there's questions.
No, I think you've done a fantastic job, and I thank you very, very much. You know, again, it's just a tremendous amount of work that has to get done, and that you people have done, both town staff and yourself, Peter, you know, and the business owners.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Peter and Donna, that you guys are doing great in the task force. Just want to also send a shout out to Judy Padell, because I've been watching her make these snowmen in her shed, at least the beginnings of them. And, you know, she's just had some great ideas, and she puts a lot of time and effort into it. And she's very creative. She's really an asset to the community. At some point, we can honor her somehow. I think that would be appropriate.
Anyone else? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the Steering Committee on the Racial Justice Equity. So we kind of took the ball and ran with it a little bit, but that doesn't mean anything that we're suggesting or have brought up is carved in stone. This is all for the Selectmen to weigh in on and decide how you want to do this. But we wanted to get this thing rolling, so we put some information out there for people in the community that are interested to submit a letter of interest. And I think as of today, we received several. And Donna has more of the pertinent information on that, their affiliation politically, some other data. But we kind of heard seven to nine, so we kind of put that out there. We've got seven so far. I think we still have some work to do, but I'm going to leave this up to the Selectmen to take over now and, you know, talk about, and Donna can, I'll let Donna go after me, and she'll tell you what we have and what's going on, and then you guys can take it.
So for the people who have thus far indicated interest in participating, we have seven people who have submitted their names. Of those seven people, there's one male, the rest are women. There are, out of the seven, six are Democrats, and there's one unaffiliated. So if we're doing a nine-member committee, we would need two more, and they would need to be unaffiliated or Republican members to maintain the required minority representation on the committee. There are two.
Well, I'm sorry, Donna, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Mark.
No, I thought you were done. I was just going to ask what, how many people of color or ethnicity are on?
There are two.
Two out of seven?
Right.
Okay.
And that's all I have to, on the composition right now. We have, we advertised it through, to accept applications or interest through the end of the month. So I think the date was October 30th.
And we just picked a timeframe, nothing that we've done is carved in stone. We really want the Selectmen to, you know, we're trying to help in what we're doing. But if the timeframes or anything about what we've done thus far isn't what you were thinking, let us know, and we'll change it.
So I, Mr. Chairman. I hope we can recruit some more Republicans, because the legitimacy of the committee, and it's out, it's whatever it comes up with, it's going to be dependent on people viewing it as a bipartisan, as a fair effort. And so I'd like, I'd like to see a broader political base. And Donna, just how many of the people that have applied are longtime Hebron residents? Because I think that's important, too.
There are, I don't know all of these people. I do know a few of them, and I'm going to say three of them are longtime Hebron residents, many, many years. And there's a, you know, there's a, there's several people that I don't know. So, and it seems like there's a pretty good age range from what I can tell.
Because I think it'll be helpful to have somebody, at least one person that has a long history with the town so that the history of the town is well represented. That's my own view, at least.
Dan Larson. I, I believe I agree with John. Yeah, I think we need to get people who have been here, who have lived in Hebron, who know Hebron, who can relate to Hebron. Because as I say, you know, my findings in talking with a lot of different people, of a lot of different nationalities, they were all actually surprised that this subject was even coming up. So what I don't want to have is people bringing biases, who have already been here a couple of years, from their, from their past communities and bringing them into Hebron. So I think it's really germane that, you know, we get people that know the town, know the people, and can adequately reflect on really who their neighbors are, what the town is. You know, to get, to get a fair representation. As I say, different towns have got different levels of issues. You know, Hebron, you know, literally, of course, well, when I moved to town, it was 3,500 people. Now we're, what, 96, 97, 98? So it's, it's been a lot of change. But I would like to see a mix of both, you know, men and women and people of different ethnicities.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Peter Casper. And I think, as I think about this, I think the key is, we're not, we need to have people that sort of can embrace the concept of how to assess systemic racism, not just how to comment on the current state of racism in our country. Because reality is, for us locally, it's really about slowing it down. As John said, lots of opinions, going back, you know, going back even one step further is understanding what we're looking for, as opposed to just providing opinions on the state of the country, that sort of thing. And so I think the key to this really is going to be that facilitator, and a person who can really encourage the perspective that's needed, which can draw upon people from outside of the task force, or Steering Committee, that can bring that perspective, people even outside of the community. Because in order for us to fully assess this, we want to remove ourselves, our personal biases, and go back to, and go to the point of assessing what is systemic racism? And how do we look for the subtleties associated with that within any government entity? And I think it's a challenge to sort of wring the emotion out of the topic, because I think if we don't early, it'll just be sort of a bunch of people providing opinions. Okay, great, but we're trying to accomplish something. And so I think the facilitator here is really going to be the key, because once we can get people on task, I think the challenge is going to be to get people to stay on task. And so I think that's one of the things that I just think about in this process. So any of those people could be good if we can stay on task and get at the real root of the issue, which is what's going to benefit the community most effectively long-term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
Andy, good comment about it being necessary to have a facilitator, and I support that 100%. And Peter, that's a great comment. The facilitator is the key, or else this is going to devolve into people just sharing a bunch of personal feelings and opinions, as you've stated, about what they think this current state of racial affairs is. So I, please share your experiences with this. But I've been to several cultural diversity trainings, implicit bias trainings, racial diversity trainings. And I know a number of facilitators. I would like to be instrumental in finding somebody who's experienced and done this and can meet with us and discuss the best way to go about this. That would be my suggestion.
Mr. Chair, Andy, did you have something? Did I see you raise, Andy?
Yeah, go ahead. I can wait.
Well, I think, I think, Mark, I think you bring up something that just resonates with me a little bit is, maybe those people we need to talk to first, before we actually form the task force, to understand how we can best get the makeup to be most effective. And so if that means we have to wait and solicit more folks, you know, we may need to do that. But I'd be interested in what the facilitator might say. The most effective groups has, have these sort of perspectives or this sort of makeup. Maybe there's more we can learn from that. So it's not just getting people that are interested, but getting the people that can help us drive at the most effective analysis. So maybe there's something there, too, Mark. I don't have the answer. It was just more of an observation based on your comment about tapping into people. And I have less than you, but I've done quite a number of, you know, from a corporate perspective, diversity and inclusion and facilitator, having been to a number of these workshops. And there's a lot you don't know, unless you go through some of these from any perspective, and so.
Peter, I agree 100% with what you just said. That's the first step. The committee isn't the first step. The facilitator is the first step. I agree.
Well, I totally agree with both of you, because I want this to be successful for the town. And the facilitator, you're right, could be the first thing we do. And then the second thing really is to have an objective for the committee. I mean, that's, that is so important, right? I mean, to line out exactly what the task is. And I'm not actually, I mean, I have an idea of what I would like the other committee to do, but I'm not, I think that's going to require a discussion also.
So maybe, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
I was just going to say, so maybe what we should be doing before we appoint a committee is actually meeting with, you know, a facilitator or facilitators, or having Andy, you know, pick a couple or three facilitators, and then us, you know, discussing how to proceed and what they envision. Maybe we should be doing that initially, and I'm going to leave it to Andy. What do you think, Andy?
I appreciate the Board of Selectmen, even considering these suggestions already. What Don and I have been doing is looking at larger communities that are already underway, like the city of Middletown. And I've had conversations with them. They have like 80 people applied to their committee. And they've got a facilitator. And that gave Don and I the idea, said, hey, this is a great idea. Let's get a neutral party, so let me just facilitate this. And you guys probably wouldn't hurt, at this point in time, as John recommended, to possibly start looking to look for some more people that you think would be good, that fit the bill of what we need politically on there, to do some recruitment. And at the same time, if you guys give us the go-ahead, Don and I will start looking into some facilitators and get you some names and some bios, and you guys could look at those for your next meeting.
Yeah, that's great. And like I said, you know, the experience with, we are Hebron. You know, we had people that were dubious of it, and they became, and they became the champions of it. And they gave the legitimacy to it, not, they weren't the only ones, but, you know, the fact that they were, they could speak to a segment of the community that other people couldn't speak to. So, you know, getting a Warner or a Shaddle, or, I don't know, a Porter or a Martin on would be a good thing.
And then also, the library had a facilitator when they went through their strategic planning. I know Selectmen Richmond was involved in that, and that person was a great facilitator, and it kept everybody on task and did a wonderful job. So just, just another thought.
The facilitator is key to any kind of committee that you're talking about like this. Once we had a facilitator, a neutral person, we moved along much faster and actually accomplished things. So yes, you need that. And I do also, we need a diversified committee, because otherwise, we're not representing the whole town. And that's, I think I said before, one of the things I noticed the most about this town is that it is not diversified. And I came from a neighborhood in Brooklyn, New York that was diversified. And it was culture shock to me to find that there were places that are not.
Andy, you know how many, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for interrupting you. How many people in the Middletown did they settle on for their committee? Do you remember?
Yeah, I'm, don't quote me on this. I'm going to say it was roughly like 12, but it was definitely under 20, but they had like 80 people.
And then they had over 10 was on, over 10 on the committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm just curious if they had a number that they thought was most effective? Because John, what were you originally, nine? Were you recommending nine, or was that what you?
You know, I was, I talked to Leah Rawls, who was the NAACP person at WellMatic. And this is kind of, I mean, it's not, it's got a little bit new. I mean, to have a town like ours go through this. I mean, they're excited, I mean, she's excited about it. But she also made up something, an observation that I think is true, which is, you know, this sort of thing attracts a certain type of person. So it's, it's going to be, you know, more liberals are going to be more interested in this generally. So it's going to take us a little time to get a more diverse community, to, you know, talk to, talk to people that are open-minded, that may not, you know, like that guy, that guy that sent in the letter that said, you know, you should be doing something else with your time. This isn't, you're happening, but then he said, you know, I can understand it in other towns, you know? So he had, he had, he had, it wasn't just a uniform opinion. So, I don't know.
Donna, could you pop up that timeline? You guys did, I appreciate all the work you did to structure this. I'm thinking that with that, maybe we can make a decision tonight on maybe putting some, extending a couple of those dates to make sure, because you guys did a really nice job of really trying to put some structure. job of really starting to put some structure on this. So thank you, Andy, for, for leading that effort. So maybe we should, Donna, okay, Donna, thank you. I just spent most of my week thanking Donna. But so Donna, just thank you for the rest of the year, okay? So maybe as a group, we could sort of just go through some of these, are these the right next steps to target and the dates, maybe push some of these. My first reaction is push a couple of dates out because we really have to be thoughtful about this. We don't want to push the recruitment. I mean, we don't, we want all of a sudden settle on a group before we make sure it has the right structure and add. And so maybe that facilitator goes before the recruitment ends. Because again, we may not, we may, we may miss something in our structuring of the group without discussions with maybe a facilitator or subject matter expert in advance. I just throw that out as I like, I love the idea of date. And maybe we could sort of decide on, do we like the dates? Do we don't like the dates? And use this structure as the basis for the next, for our next meeting and our follow-ups.
Dan Larson, I, I agree. I think we need to get the facilitator first. Today is already the 15th of October. I am not sure how long it will actually take to find a facilitator. I would hopefully, Mark would be able to get some of his recommendations to Andy. And, you know, in reality, I, I don't see us really being able to, to discuss or interview anybody until probably that November 5th or possibly even that next meeting. You know, just trying to be realistic. I mean, that's still literally three weeks away. That may be too, too tight. So I would say, you know, looking at a calendar, it would be the night, if we could have the 19th to attempt to pick a facilitator. We now have, we still would be able to get the recruitment of the members. So then possibly that first meeting in December, we could actually get the people sworn in or whatever at that point. I don't know how that fits or, you know, drives with everybody else's ideas.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Casper, I guess maybe Gail, you can answer, Andy and the facilitator. Is this someone that we pay? Is this a volunteer? Because if it's employment effectively, we may not be able to get someone to commit with the two-week notice to start, you know, acting in that capacity. So is that a volunteer position or are we looking to pay a professional facilitator? I just, I don't know the answer. I'm just curious.
We're looking at both.
We paid the facilitator.
Okay, okay. So you have both, Andy, in terms of people that might have the capability to volunteer and others that do it in a more professional capacity?
I think it's such an important committee that we have to throw some money at it to get it done.
I'm just curious because that may need some more time. Dan, to your point, saying, hey, Mark, you want to facilitate and you're starting two weeks. You may be like, maybe, let me meet with the board, let me get through like your charter. What do you want me to accomplish? How do you, you know, so that may take a meeting or two, just even garner the interest and lay out the terms and the expectations. It has to be, how many meetings? How long will this last? What's the compensation? So maybe those, Andy, are some of the things we could sort of think about resolving between now and the next couple of weeks, what you think. And I don't know what's reasonable there, but I think we have to have some of that because a facilitator might just say, well, okay, how long and how much would be two reasonable questions. We should have an answer to that.
Mr. Chairman? It is true, we paid the facilitator for the strategic plan for the library. Because by paying someone, you have someone who will devote enough time to what the task is. I was also on another committee here in town for the Board of Ed and they hired an outside facilitator. And again, that was a paid position to someone with a background to be able to do what was expected. So I definitely say we need someone that we recruit, go over the resumes and be very careful of who we hire.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
I, I agree with Gail. And Dan, I think your, your timeline is more reasonable extending it a couple of weeks because thi- this is going to take some time to do correctly and select the right person. And as John said, we need to have an objective that we create with the new facilitator.
Okay, my only other question is, do we have any kind of an idea what the cost of this kind of thing would be? You know, I think we definitely need to go forward, but, you know, we really, really sliced the budget to a razor thin line. What type of money are we looking at? Do we have any idea?
Yes, we're not looking at crazy money. You know, under, I would take under $10,000.
Oh, way below that, I think.
Yeah.
I was thinking half, three. Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking three to five, but.
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. My Scottish Irish part got like a stabbing chest pain.
I, I kind of think, I mean, this is, whoever's in this, this area, I think this is kind of a plum assignment. It's, it's new. It's, it's new. And it's, I, I think whatever happens is going to be really, I mean, it's got, I think it's going to be good for the town, but I think it's also going to be interesting too. If it's done, done right, and I think I love what everybody's doing, you know, slow and steady wins the race here. There's nothing, there's no reason to jump into things unprepared. And so I appreciate that.
Okay, I guess we'll, you know, let our, let the town staff do the, do the next steps. Did you want to say anything else, Andy, or?
No, Don and I, we've got our charge from you guys. We'll work on putting a new schedule together and we'll make some calls and Mark will be in touch with us and we'll contact a few people we know to do facilitating and see if they're interested. We'll have more information at the next board of selectmen for you guys to decide on.
Good work, guys. Very good. Thank you.
And if you could recruit some members that you think would be good and fit the bill, I think we've got several people now. There's no guarantee that everybody that submits is just going to be on there, but we still need to do the, you know, make it, make the committee the proper way. So we probably going to have to do some recruiting if you're up to that.
Oh, definitely. Okay, thank you. Our next thing, please.
Yes, and I apologize, we have, I believe we have two young women waiting patiently and learning how the town of Hebron is run. I appreciate them being patient. They can click on now if they want to join with their cameras, that'd be fine. So item 7A is UMass Environmental Engineering Students in Connecticut Water Project on Hebron Center Water System. So we were approached, they kind of got some information regarding Hebron's water system. And I was approached on behalf of the town of Hebron. I thought it'd be a great idea to have, anytime we have students looking to do a project, we, we try to cooperate and I think we'll benefit by it as well. So another set of eyes on it. I don't have their names. I think I see Julie Farr. And there was another lady here, Bridget Shaborus? I'm not sure. Are they both here? And if they want to join in, they can.
Yes. So I just want to say thank you so much. Can, can everybody hear me clearly? Okay, great. So thank you so much for letting us attend your town meeting tonight. I just want to do a brief introduction on who we are. So my name is Julia Farr and I'm currently a master student in environmental and civil engineering at UMass Amherst. I'm Bridget.
And I'm Bridget Charlebois. I'm a master student as well in environmental and water resource engineering.
So we're doing a class project and we're working on the town of Hebron and we're also working with the Connecticut Water Company. We're going to be looking into the challenge of water supply and conservation, especially within the Hebron Center water system. So we have been tasked to present alternative solutions to aid in meeting the water demand that is currently present in the town, using our engineering and sustainability skillset that we've built so far within our educational careers.
So we're actually in a group of six people for this project, me and Julia, and then another civil engineer and then two sustainable master students as well. And we've been working alongside Hebron's wet run agent, Steve Knoff. We've met with him a couple of times and some of the representatives from the Connecticut Water Company to gain insight on the current system and the town needs. And we've been researching conservation measures that were successful in other communities and would be applicable for Hebron. And our broad focuses that we've been looking into are like regulatory, economic, educational outreach, zoning and planning and green infrastructure solution. And as our final deliverable for this project, we're going to be compiling resources and several alternatives within these categories for the town to consider in a literature review based on our research. And we also wanted to put out there that we would gladly present our final result, results in an oral presentation if you guys would like that. Yeah, we're here tonight to see if you have any questions for us or is there any certain category within the water conservation that you would like us to focus on? Or do you have any resources that would aid us in our research?
I'll go. First off, I want to thank you very, very much and, you know, Hebron welcomes you. Water is one of those key resources that without it, literally everything else withers and dies. We've already had issues where we had a well go down, where quite literally we have, you know, the senior housing that was almost severely adversely affected. And any type of, of economic growth for our community, one of the major issues is going to be water. It's, it's, you know, a key to life and so, you know, we welcome any kind of input. You know, Hebron, we do not have a reservoir. You know, it's, as you will see, it's all based on wells. And, you know, sometimes wells are not always the, the long-term solution. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, the types of things that you can come up with, you know, how you can help us and this will help us to design and further our economic development type plans, you know, and, you know, the basic living for, for our town. So I thank you very, very much. Any other members?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, it may, Peter Casper, it may, and thank you, obviously. We appreciate your, your interest in obviously in advance the work you're going to do on behalf of our community. But I, and maybe it was an allergic, Andy, what's the timeline for your involvement, Bridget or Julia, in terms of sort of beginning to end? Do you have a timeline identified?
Yeah, so it's a semester-long project. So we've been working since the beginning of September and our semester ends November 20th. So.
You can do it. Yeah.
Yes. So yeah, I hope to have a final deliverable and presentation probably after Thanksgiving, I would think.
Are there any, if I can follow up, are there any, any elements of support that you were looking for that you're not getting? Not as a criticism, but just as a sort of a, you'd like to have more of something that access to that you're not getting or we don't have to offer? Was there anything you expected that is surprising you in terms of information or access or lack of information in terms of your expectations versus what you're seeing in the, in the first few weeks of your involvement?
Yeah, so we were given a lot of information from Connecticut Water Company in the town of Hebron about the current conditions of the system. But I think we just wanted to come tonight to see if you guys had, wanted to know more about like the economic growth or goals of the town within the water system, specifically from the board, or things that you guys have high concerns about from, we want to hear from the community itself, so.
Dan Larson, again, I, you know, speaking for myself, the two main issues are, A, the sustainability to keep our current users, you know, supplied with, with the water that they need in order to maintain their viability. But then the other thing would be the, the types of, of gallonages that could be expected, you know, again, you know, utilizing your studies, because that is what's going to help us to know and/or any other new developers, whether it's residential, commercial, what have you, who are going to come into town. One of the big questions is, is there going to be enough water for them to meet, you know, their, their needs? So that would be a, a, you know, long-term usage plan. A company to come into Hebron or, you know, residential project coming to Hebron without water is not going to survive. You know, so we, we really need to know where we are and where we can go. You know? John, you have anything on that area or?
Yeah, our, the town's growth depends on us getting water. There's, we've, that is a problem. I think they call it the ice, the Route 66 problem, where there's just no water in Eastern Connecticut. And not no water, but it does limit our growth potential. And this is so important and so great that you guys are doing this because the future of the town, basically planning for the town centers around this. And, you know, actually, early on in our water problems, I, I reached out to Yukon into Eastern Connecticut. But they really didn't have the bandwidth to do it and we didn't have the money. So it's really great that you're doing this. It's a fantastic project and, and, you know, it has real-world implications, let me tell you.
Yeah, well, thank you, guys.
Gail or Mark or? Okay, perfect. Thank you very, very much. We look forward to hearing your report.
Yeah.
It'll be very interesting.
Yeah, so we'll be in touch with Steve. But yeah, if you guys want us to come to another meeting or have a separate meeting to present our findings.
We would love that.
We would, we do.
Yeah, okay.
We definitely want you to present your findings, yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dan. So next, the draft agenda. November 5th.
Wow.
I know.
Who knows, maybe I'll actually be retired. I know, everybody's laughing at me.
How many days, you'll never, how many days left?
You have been retiring for the last three years.
13. 13. And who's counting? Okay, our next would be the consent agenda. Now, there was other, I thought there was another set of minutes back from?
There's two. There's April 27th and September 17th.
Okay, there we are.
And the October 1st, we're going to move to the next meeting agenda.
Right.
Okay. Oh, our proposed motion, and again, anybody has anything they want to add to the, to the November 5th agenda, please? Oh, our proposed motion, and again, anybody has anything they want to add to the, to the November 5th agenda, please get that forwarded into the town staff. My only question on the April 27th, 2020, in reading that, I thought, and I'm not sure if that was the one that I'd made a motion, that the the town employee pay, and I'm trying to figure out how it was worded, was taken off the table as for possible budget cuts. I know Mark had discussed it and I thought I'd made the motion. That's the only thing that that going way back then, I don't remember. I do remember I made the motion that, that passed, which is not reflected in that. But outside of that, that would be the only possible change that I saw out of those two. I don't know if anybody has anything else, any other clarifications or anything?
I found a minor, I guess it's a typo, ever really, in the same April minutes. Under new business, item eight, the third paragraph down, to form a steering committee. And it was a double clause in there to, to move the process forward. The words to being are of typo, I guess, because they don't make sense.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Well, then I'll make the motion, move to the Hebron Board of Select to approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein, as if individually adopted as amended, the April 27th, 2020 regular meeting and the September 17th regular meeting, and then the tax refund as stated. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? John? Your mic, your mic, you're muted. You're muted, John.
Okay, John Collins, aye. Sorry about that.
Okay, Peter Casper.
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail Richmond.
Gail Richmond, aye.
And Mark Rivera.
Mark Rivera, aye.
Dan Larson, aye. At least you have a mic, John. Mine won't work. Had to get a new computer.
That looks hard.
Yeah, literally the other day, literally two days ago, my computer, the cat jumped on and that was it. It just fried, done. So I've been trying to get everything set up for tonight and work and everything else, literally within 48 hours. And obviously it didn't work.
As I have two cats, I always make sure that my, any computer I buy is, has cat protection built into it.
Anyway, okay, moving on, the liaison reports, Andy.
We're still wrapping up the Ram project. It looks good. There's some small items on a punch list that still need to be completed. But all in all, it went pretty well. And then I stated earlier about the WPCA, they're taking the, the letter that I sent them on the behalf of the board of segment under advisement and are going to come back with some, some changes.
Okay, Mark.
Reporting on Ram, a student rep at the, at the board meeting was saying that the students are adjusting the best they can and there have been computer issues and that's difficult at times. 138 students are just learning remotely, so they're not even participating in, in the hybrid model. At the meetings, they're continuing to discuss how we keep things safe. And as you all know, we've had some COVID cases with both teachers and students on the athletic fields. And the administration responds quickly. And we've been able to stay open because we've been able to contain them, do contact tracing, putting kids on quarantine and they're out of school for 14 days. I could say on behalf of the teachers that there's, there's anxiety. And I think the longer you go through this, you kind of do feel a sense of fatigue. Not that you want to abandon your, the risk management of it, but it takes a toll on you. And I know the teachers are struggling with this and I give them a lot of credit for hanging in there and doing the best they can for the students. So that's, Mr. Leslie wanted me to say that, you know, everybody's doing the best they can over there and safety is our number one concern. And I think we're faring fairly well and it seems like there's an uptake in cases and obviously it's hit the White House and Connecticut's cases are going up again. So we all have to be vigilant to keep things safe.
Thank you. I, I am hoping and I'm, you know, I'm going to ask the same question of Gail. And I'm hoping the rest of the board would also agree. It would be interesting at the end of, of the semester or whatever, when, I'm not sure how they're going to do grading or how they're going to do testing, to see just where those people who are strictly doing the home base learning, I guess is what they're calling it, how they are faring in relation to the students that are actually either going to school or the hybrid models. It just, I'd be curious to know just, you know, are they on par, on par testing-wise? You know, at, at the end of, of the system. I'm not sure if anybody else wants to kind of chime in or not, and I'm sorry to put you on that kind of a spot.
I'll ask that question. I'll ask that question, Dan. That's, that's a good question.
You know, I, I, not, not addressing that, but I, I have to say, you know, and not getting into, you know, whether you know, remote versus in school is the best. But I do say going past, you know, the, the high school and seeing kids play soccer right now just sends a nice message. It's, it's very hopeful and you know, well done, I think, you know, shows, shows that, you know, we're getting on with things.
On the long-term, Dan, to answer your question, I would not want to answer that because we don't know what the long-term effects are going to be. In June, when, because the kids have been out of school for a few months, you had a lot of pass fail grades. And that was troublesome for some of the students up at Ram, as I'm sure Mark heard, because they were going off to college and they were stellar students and they wanted their grades. But we're going to see a lot more of that, I think.
Well, as I said, there's, I would assume that there's got to be some sort of measurable criteria to say whether or not someone, you know, has, has learned the required items to, you know, to move ahead or, or whatever. And I, I, I'm just interested in, in just kind of seeing just how this all plays out and, you know, I'm assuming they do mid-year exams. Back in my day, you know, we, they gave us our, our stone tablets and copper chisels and hammers and, you know, we'd have to beat out the answers, so.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I may, Peter Casper, just observing from my own family and thinking about a lot of states, there are some states and institutions that have moved away from the acceptance of standardized testing. I think it's, it's going to be harder to measure short-term. It's like if you apply for a college in California, they don't allow acceptance of SAT scores. So how do you sort of assess? You don't assess until you get there. And having kids in college, in high school and out of college, Ram historically has done a wonderful job of preparing my children for college, although having two kids in Ram in this current environment, I think Ram is doing a great job. One is thriving and one is struggling beyond belief. Same environment, depends on the kid and there's a lot of kids caught in between in terms of they need more structure. They can't get it. Very difficult to learn independently, especially at the earlier ages. So I think the long-term impact of that, I, well, I should say, the impact of that would be more of a long-term assessment. Again, I, one child I'm, I'm really happy with, the, the ability to, to respond and the other one, I've got a, we've got a road ahead of us. And so I think there's a lot of unknown. It's not as simple as, you know, virtual or hybrid. It's, it's really about the child and their ability to adapt to a whole different environment when, as you know, at that age, there's so many other, or Mark can attest to this better than, or as much as I can. I only can attest to it from a parental perspective, but in terms of the other issues of that sort of impact and distract and take up a child's time during that time period are non-academic. And so there's a lot of that. So to John's point, it's great to see the kids out on the fields and participating. I just think it'll be a while before we truly understand the impact, especially with the removal of acceptance of some of these standardized tests that at least had historically been the benchmark of how did, how did they do relative to the rest of the world?
Dan, I may have one comment that might help you, which is both personally and knowing students. And John, this will make you happy. The SAT preparation. My own stepson won up like 70 points from his last test in the school works for SAT preparation. He got a 720 on his math.
Wow.
He and his friends, he and his friends have been working at it. They take it seriously. And this, their prep started during COVID, so they've been doing it all virtually. And he just got his results tonight. He came in and he was proud of himself and he was talking about his friends. So, and I know exactly what you're saying, Peter. He, he thrives on being virtual and he loves his own personal study. And, and my stepdaughter is the more social person and she thrives being around people and being in groups. So it's so dependent on the person too, Pete. You're so right with that.
Oh, you're right.
There's even kids coming to school on days they're not supposed to come. And those aren't the good kids. They missed the, it's bizarre. They, they come to school and they're not even supposed to be there. So that's a problem that we never really anticipated and trying to figure out how to deal with that because those are the kids that need more attention. So like you say, Pete, you, you do the best you can with, with, with the students, but they all have different needs.
Well, I should say, just mentioned, I forgot this. The NITCH school ratings just came out for the, for the country and Ram was rated number 26 in, in the, in the state, which is amazing, given we're talking about private schools and public schools. And number one in Tom County and had a academic rating of A+. Kudos to all of the board members and the teachers and the principals and the parents and the students and the taxpayers.
And I have to say that we need to think of the teachers in the elementary schools who get the youngsters prepared to learn and think when they get to high school.
Good point.
And Mark, my big question for you is, I'm very, having worked in special ed, I'm very concerned about the special ed students during this. Because you said the students that need attention.
Yeah, they're, they're struggling the most, Gail. No, there's no question about that, as you suspected.
You know, going door to door, I've, I've talked to a number of special ed teachers and that's what they said. They're, they are so fearful that this is going to make that the crisis, this COVID crisis is going to make special ed less, you know, less important or less a priority and can't really.
It's not that I think anyone's giving them less attention so much as the fact that how do you give them the attention and the structure when they're not in the school building? And that's the kind of things they need.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, we all got off task.
No, that, well, it means it's, it's an important thing. And, you know, so I, I think it was a fair discussion. Gail?
Okay, Commission on Aging. The Medicare Open Enrollment began today, October 15th, and it will continue through December 7th. What I'd like to point out to people is that the Senior Center is open to provide assistance in reviewing your options and in understanding the various coverage choices. The Energy Assistant Winter Heating Program also began today, so you can get your application in for that if you need to. The Annual Flu Clinic will be held Monday, October 19th, from 9:30 to 11:00. So if there are any questions that anyone has, please call the Senior Center at 860-228-1700. Nothing from the Hebron Board of Ed as the last meeting was canceled. The Douglas Library began their extended hours on October 5th and that's been very successful as people are getting used to that, that the library is now open Tuesday and Thursday. Virtual storytime is continuing and you no longer have to pre-register for it. So you can just go to the desk and get the activity packet to go along with the story. And next Monday, we will have the next meeting of, on Monday, October 19th, we'll have the next meeting of the Board of Trustees. That's all my work.
Okay, if I could just interject, and, and then John, I think you all know of this also, you, you also got a phone call. One of, one of our townspeople, apparently Chatham, and I'm going to let Andy speak to this a little bit. For whatever reason, the insurance regulations, and I'm screwing this up, they do not take United Healthcare for the flu shots. So Andy, if you could just discuss this quickly, because I know you were working on this.
United Healthcare doesn't pay. That's, that's the issue.
Yeah, so.
Yes, they will not.
So we have policies and procedures at the health district like everybody else and through the audits, it's stated that we're not supposed to let the subordinates deal with cash on fees. When that policy was put in place, nobody saw this coming down the pipe where there's one certain insurance company that does not cover the, there's two types of flu shots. One's a heavier dose and they're, they're very limited supply. So what's going on at the health district is they're having these flu clinics and we're running out of the stuff. So we've had to turn away people that even had insurance that wanted the doses, but we ran out and we couldn't give them to them. So when talking with Russ Millman, we've had a resident in town call a couple of the selectmen and then got to my office. I reached out to Russ and Russ was going to try to arrange with the Hebron CVS to have someone come out and actually give her or administer a, a dose or a shot for her. So I'm not sure how that ended up. But Russ was going to contact her this afternoon and that's what he was working on. But the unfortunate situation is, is Medicare, they go with the, you know, the cheapest bid and it was United Healthcare. And now they have these little caveats where we're not going to cover clinics. You have to go to your physician, a minute clinic, a walk-in clinic, you can get it and they'll cover it. But for whatever reason, I don't have the exact explanation, but they won't cover like these community flu clinics that health districts put on. It gets, gets crazy and it's unfortunate and we kind of knew about it. But the board, which I'm the chair of, when it got brought up to us, we didn't think it was going to be that big of a problem because the alternative was you could go to your, your physician, you could go to a clinic, so on and so forth and still get your flu shot. So now you add the COVID to it where you have people that have not been out and don't want to go out or go into a facility like that because of their age or they're more prone to possibly catching, you know, COVID. I, we understand. So Russ was struggling with it. We're going to try to come up with a resolution. Hopefully that happened. I'll find out tomorrow morning.
So let me just say, this woman's story is kind of, it's, it's, I think it's, it's a, it's worth recapping, just what, why she was in such, had such a problem. She called me and she was crying because she couldn't get this, this boost for the flu. And, you know, this was hopeful to her because here, here you have COVID where we have no, no, no solution, you know? Well, I guess maybe we do. I don't know. Well, I guess maybe we do, I don't, I don't know. I guess we'll see. But, no, we don't, I guess, we don't have it. Right, but, you know, we do have this, this boost that, this 65-plus boost for, for flu that's been developed. It's, you know, it was developed years ago. So she hasn't been out of her house, she hasn't gone inside to anyplace else for eight months because she's 80 years old. And so she doesn't want to go to CVS, she doesn't want to go to anyplace that would give it to her. So, you know, she goes over to Marlboro for this, this, and, and she has the, the wrong type of insurance. And then she says, well, I'll pay for ca, for cash, and they say, no. And so that's very frustrating, so you've got to go home. And she could go to her doctor, but her doctor's at St. Francis in Hartford's, and she'd have to go inside again, you know, and it's, it's, it's a huge thing for, you know, for her to, to do that. So very frustrated, very fearful, and, you know, looking for a solution. And, and Russ was great, you know, Russ is, Russ is, is trying to work this, through this, but, and I'm sure we will, but that's, that's the situation.
So I, I think to sum it up, you know, people, you know, make the phone calls. You know, let our senior citizen coordinator know, let Andy know we're trying to come up with, with solutions for this problem that will best benefit our, our citizens. Thank you. Mark?
I'm, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, and Peter then? I had to admit somebody.
Peter Casper, thank you, Mr. Chair. Parks and Rec did not meet since the last update, and the Board of Finance, we covered in terms of Andy talking about the joint meeting coming up would have been the, the main point to make there, so I have nothing additional to add.
Okay, and with me, Dan Larson, Historic Properties canceled, and I was not able to attend the Fire Department meeting. And that's about it.
And John?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't have much either, so.
Well, you should go down the list, so I can make sure I get everybody in their order.
Yeah, no, no problem. But EDC's meeting next week, but the, the important thing here is, and I don't know a lot about this, I just knew, knew, know that the Green Committee is having a shredder event. They used a grant they, they got for $650, and I saw there was a sign in the middle of town for it to happen on November 14th. So Andy, do you know, you probably know more about this than I do.
You know, you kind of got me there, John. I, I haven't heard about it. I mean, I know it's coming up, and I know they're meeting. So normally Mike or the young lady would reach out to me, but they haven't done that yet, so.
Yeah, me too. So I, I, I saw, well, you know, the previous meeting, they'd said they weren't, weren't sure they would have it this year, but then I saw the, the sign in the middle of town for November 14th, so I guess we'll find out as we, the next week or so.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Kate.
And I should also say, H.M.'s having a run to raise money at Burnhill Park on Saturday. And it's 25 bucks, it goes to a good cause. I think it starts at nine or 10, there's two runs. So anybody that wants to run, that'd be great.
Yeah, 5K project graduation benefits from it. So Andy, we'll see you out there, you and me, brother, 3.1. Let's do it.
I might be there. I've got a wedding that day.
Oh, here we go, okay.
It's mine.
Can't miss that.
Congratulations. Okay, anybody have anything else? Better for the order, Gail?
All righty, I move that we go into executive session to, um, just do a mid-year review on the town manager's goals. And it is 8:55.
And you have to invite in myself and Donna Lanza.
Oh, yes, I left that out. I want to invite you in, Andy, as we're going to talk about you. And let's invite in Donna for ease of keeping us on task.
And locking the meeting.
Yeah.
Hey, we gonna have any discussion about that?
About what?
Would, would, would anybody consider pushing that back to the next meeting?
Oh, you don't want to do that tonight, you're okay?
We already been here two hours, and we did spend a lot of time on other stuff. I'm not sure it's fair to Andy, it have been here two hours already, and we're going to talk about this.
And he's getting married in two days, oh, okay.
Let's give him a break. That's just my feeling.
What does everyone else think?
Absolutely.
My fear is, we keep pushing it off, we're going to be top behind, behind the eight ball on this.
Look, we're going to be in next year's goals, I, I know that, but, um...
I mean, I'm easy whichever way people want to go. I'm just, I, I just get nervous pushing stuff off to the point where you end up with a whole bucket.
Let's promise to do what we didn't, what we did last, not to do what we did last year, and push it off in November again. So let's push it off to November or bust.
Yeah, that's it. Let's November, let's do it November 5th.
Okay.
And then just in reality, the COVID had a lot to do with a lot of those goals, so there's not a whole lot to...
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to assess goals in COVID, so we, we have to sort of think about it differently anyway.
That was one of my reasons to think we needed to discuss them because there's been a lot of impediments to getting some of this material accomplished.
Andy, you're getting married on Saturday, is that what I heard? Is that true?
Yep.
Congratulations.
He doesn't like to. Are you nervous? You all right, brother?
No, no, it's, it's good. I got a good one.
That's great.
He has a wonderful girlfriend.
She's lucky.
Ellen, Ellen is very nice.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you able to take time off following your wedding, or do you, are you coming back to work next week?
No, I'm coming back to work.
Look at you.
It's not my first rodeo.
My last one, though.
Yes.
That's your last rodeo.
Last and your best. Congratulations.
Okay, so it sounds as if everybody wants to push this off to the November 5th. So we'll, we'll put it on the November 5th agenda, the Executive Committee for this purpose. And is everyone in agreement with that? John?
Aye. John Collins, aye.
Peter Casper, aye.
Okay, Mark?
Aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And myself, aye. Andy, you okay with that?
I am.
Okay, perfect. So then, Gail, your turn again.
Okay, it is 8:59, and I move that we adjourn.
Thank you very much. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Night, guys.
All right. Thank you.